Calling the meeting to order. Some evidence of.
The County Board of Supervisors July 18th meeting notice on agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on July 7, 2023, and was published in the legal newspaper the week of July 10, 2023, with the published date of July 13. In addition, on Friday, July 7, 2023, at 3:51 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. Constitutes legal notice under the open meetings law.
Okay. Need a roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Eve Warren Dahl.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Sharon Kelly's not here. Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Laliapray.
Here.
Russ Arkand.
Here.
CJ Simmons.
Here.
John Bonaprise.
Here.
14.
Want to join me as Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ryan has a request for an announcement or recognition.
Yeah, just quickly, the community had a unfortunate and pretty devastating loss with the passing of Cody Intz over the weekend. He was a graduate of Unity High School. He is an accomplished and upstanding young man at Unity. He went to the University of Iowa and just in honor of him and recognition of his, in support of his parents, Tammy and Marty, I just wanted a moment of silence.
Thank you for that, Ryan. Need a motion on the agenda, please. Move to accept the agenda as presented. Is there any changes? Not at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Matters for adoption on consent agenda on resolutions and as listed, need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Any public comment? Do you have anybody? There's no one up here. No comment? Moving along. Make sure you care. Yeah, go ahead, Johnny.
I just got a call that everyone just picked up my partner in my place, so I take a better.
Go.
Appreciate all your.
Drive careful.
Let us keep you posted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Need a motion on the res- on the resolution. We got some discussion on possible action regarding the implementation of board priorities.
Yes. I've asked Kerry Weiss from UW Extension to come here. She and Bob and a few others have worked diligently to help us really bring the initial organization of the priorities to a head here. And so tonight is kind of the final presentation before we really start digging in and do our work. So Kerry, who is actively involved, is going to kick off our little presentation here.
My job today, I was given sort of a time limit. That's great, otherwise I might talk, but what you need to know, I'm here to sort of share the process that we went through, just as a reminder. For your reference as well, there's an executive summary document in front of you so that you can follow along if you want. And ultimately, I'm just going to speak to how to access that a little bit better because it is fully documented there. But Claire, you can go ahead. Thank you. And you can go one more time. This is essentially the process that we followed all the way back beginning in March. We sat and interviewed one-on-one with all of you, and I want to just reiterate that initial piece and how important it was to get all of your individual voice and vote on your content, what you want to drive forward with your priorities. I think that's really impactful. And I thought that Bob had a great idea in doing that. It did take a little bit longer, but we got a lot of rich data. And so that really fed to this whole process overall. But in your documentation, this is the way it will read. It's just a short summary of each of those deliverables via the benchmarks as laid out here. And so you can see again, the interviews, the analysis, board presentation of those, and then the real work, which went to the divisional directors, sort of fleshed that out with more activity development and alignment, as well as to you all in your committees. There was a lot of fine wordsmithing that took place, a lot of iterations that, you know, the planning committee helped support, but then thus we're here to do the final board presentation and then provide you with that summary. So again, as you read through it, this is the way it's going to read, just a quick synopsis of all those activities. But then after that, what you're going to have is a table that represents by priority in order with the directional statement. And that directional statement really reads to say, sort of, this is our mission. This is how we're gonna, this is what we strive or drive to do. Under each priority, there's a table, and it reads left to right as far as the goals or objectives that will sort of full, more fully flush that out. And then the activities that give it a little bit more narration, as well as the assigned committee and/or divisions. Then with a really brief sort of vague timeline of 2026, which is when this planning cycle sort of cycles or to come out and or if it's ongoing. So basically, thank you, Claire, these are your top six, if required, forward. The two new or emerging, the idea of supporting housing initiatives and the infrastructure piece. And this is the new sort of visual that helps represent the activity as it has been, and then going forward, where there will be some peak in that effort and where it might sort of wane. As 26 comes to an end. Questions, though, of me as far as process or procedural clarification? Vince is the champion of all of this and helps to motivate and bring a little bit more color to the importance of this.
Oh, thank you, Karen. My main purpose for being here in this part of the presentation is simply to say thank you and also to say now the work really began. And I'm excited about it. As you think back three and a half years ago with our early first effort at these, what we called game changers or things that we could do, we learned a lot. And, and you know, you always have ebbs and flows of projects, and I think we're going to be much better at the implementation of these now. So I'm just going to highlight up here on the slides, the mission, the vision statements that we agreed upon. You'll also notice that Bob has already switched out our talent, our poster board. So we'll see that at every meeting in here of our priorities. And I will point out too, in the report in front of you, it's six, seven, eight pages, whatever it is, but the back four or five are the objectives and specific actions that have been created as a result of input from you and committee meetings, or a lot of input from our staff. When, when the directors took these mission statements back to their staffs, they started brainstorming to say, what can we do? What do we want to challenge us? Doesn't mean we'll do all of them. And it doesn't mean we won't add some going on to it, but it's a great place to start. So the first one, increase public safety and reduce crime. And, and of course, Don is here, but the key there, that my takeaway, when you look at those specific action steps, it's a lot about data-driven approaches. We have the ability now to analyze data better, we're going to seek it and recover it, and come up with ideas, programs, education and prevention. There's a, in Don's objectives there are, and I shouldn't say just Don's, this is also Community Services Division because it's not just arresting people, but it's preventing crime, and it's helping people from getting in those situations to, to create a criminal act. But it's about communication, education. I think the new term in the police department is community policing. And as I understand it, that's a lot of educating and communicating with the public so they know what's going on, what the risks are, what to look for, and how they might help people early on from ever committing crimes. This was one that was on our list three years ago. It may be on our list 30 years from now. I don't know. But we're going to do what we can to really drive down and find things that can help our communities. Next one was substance abuse. And this is really about reducing those associated risks with substance abuse. It's again, like the previous one, prevention, enforcement of laws, treatment, and effective diversion programs. So it's very important, as usual, that law enforcement and community services work together to make sure that they are looking at all aspects and all angles of this terrible problem. Again, another key will be analyzing data trends. We have CJCC, we have, you know, the police force, we have community services, we've got a statistician now up in our IT department, and we think we can get a lot of information that can help us choose better directions. Third is improving the county infrastructure, specifically facilities, roads and bridges. You know, one of the things I found out, and some of you are on town boards, is how do we keep our roads passable? How do we keep them ready? It's a big deal in the winter, the summer, whenever. Bridges, those are expensive. And we can do a better job of planning, securing funds in advance, anticipating what those needs are going to be, having a deferred maintenance program, and implementing our CIP to a better extent. And you can see what Mo and his team has put together to address that. Next, reducing the barriers to housing developments. This is the one, you know, I found out all 72 counties in Wisconsin are looking at it, and I don't think as a county in the United States is not considering this one. Don't know that we're going to have the answer, but I think we're going to make a dent. I think we're going to have some things that will actually incent developers to consider Polk County before maybe a neighboring county. We want to be a leader in promoting the development of housing, and we're going to team up with the local communities. We've passed a resolution in which we're going to offer some, or we will be drafting a resolution that will more specifically state how we can help a community incent developer to consider their community for building. They can decide the type of housing that they need. It will be geared toward workforce house, kind of a loan program. The other thing is the county can be a tremendous educational resource, not only for communities, but also for individuals. And I think that because we're, you know, it's not a, we don't have a Department of Housing or HUD here in the county, but we do have a lot of expertise and a lot of interest, and we can provide some support or guidance or even leadership in some cases related to helping housing projects get started. Next is expanding broadband. To further develop our initiatives, and, and I say this with great pride, I think Polk County, because of our great internet service providers, we have locals, because of the efforts of you in this room to pass some simple easing of rest of regulations, and because we supported those ISPs to have grants, to get their grant money, we have probably more per mile cable in the ground than any other county in the state. I don't know that, but we have border-to-border coverage with some gaps. The challenge is how do we get more people to adopt it? And that's what we're working on now, is finding out how they can access their internet service providers, have a choice in many cases, how they can convince them to hook them up. We're going to develop some financial incentives that will encourage people to either help them pay for the line to their house, or maybe it's for the infrastructure or the hardware in their house. So there are things we're looking at, but we think if we can help students, vets, businesses, citizens hook up to high-speed internet, it's going to help us in the long run. Finally, another one that we have carried over, investing in parks, tourism, recreation. And in this one, we have a really good start. We've got a great plan. We're going to focus on completing our comprehensive trail network plan and working through it as we're doing now. We're going to pursue grants, increase marketing and promotion. And I'm excited to say, you know, it's not something that government normally does, but when I talk to people out in the community, I'm getting more interest of people saying, who's going to take care of that place? And you have sponsors yet. Do you, you're going to allow advertising? So, you know, we think that might be something to help pay for the maintenance of these things. And I think that will help us expand our whole parks, trails, networks going forward. So that is a good thing. In closing, I would just say this. We did a great job, Bob, Kerry, and all of you, in putting together what you think are priorities for this county. And like, like I did last time, it will give you the opportunity to focus, to work together, the differences of opinion and ideas, because much of this is new. But if we're all working together, we can get something done. And 10 years from now, or whenever, you can look back and say, yep, we were responsible for that. That, that's something that I think makes all of us good and makes our citizens happy here. So thanks for all you're doing. If you have any questions, be happy to entertain those. But you'll be hearing about this throughout the year as we come to committees and talk about some of these specific objectives and actions. Bob, what did I forget? Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Vince. Okay, we need a discussion, possible action regarding Resolution 3223. That's as. County's officer just went through our public protection unanimously. It's before. I think, Don, if you want to address what the situation is.
We're asking here for this to put new corrections, full-time employee positions. They'll be used to how Duke Security here in this building and the Justice Center. Apparently, we have Parma Security over at the Justice Center. They're having difficulty staffing it. So we've been under budget in that line, and I may use some of my part-time correction money to fund this. So it's budget neutral. It's just we're asking for two FD positions to fill these positions.
They're going to replace what we have now and.
Well, right now, we don't have anything here other than.
Right, yeah, I understand.
We're going to put a full-time corrections position over here. They're going to be corrections officers. They're going to be trained to work in the jail, and we're going to post an assignment for one person here and one person at the Justice Center for now.
So take a lot of pressure. Anybody have any questions to reference to that resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Want to do on the.
Okay. I don't know that we have any, do we have an update on litigation? Why do they laugh?
Groundhog Day.
We got, we did receive an email last week from the judicial assistant indicating that the draft opinion for one of the two cases was over 200 pages, and the judicial assistant was diligently working to proofread and edit it. And so that's the last update we have.
So we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet.
There's no need for a closed session at this time?
I am here prepared, if you want to now, or we can do it later at another closed session, but I have calculated all of the expenses for our sour litigation. I would like that, though, in a closed session. And, and we can go over that if you're interested.
Let's have a consensus is, are we prepared to try to understand the expenses that have been incurred by the litigation?
Pretty easy to understand, but.
Well, not for some people.
Yeah.
I'd like to know. And is it, may I ask if there's, what's the, is it not public information?
It would not be public information.
Not yet, okay.
Not until it's complete, right?
Correct.
Well. You want to do that at the end of the, of the.
Agenda?
Is anyone else interested? If it's just me, I don't know.
Do you want to move it to the end of the agenda, though? So is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do it just later on tonight. Okay.
Not too much later, but anyway.
So on the next, may I speak on the next agenda item?
The next agenda item we, is my appointment.
It is. And so one of the things that the clerk brought up to me is our current rules of order. Because of the appointments that occurred in the last term, it, it didn't have, you know, a broad decision-making base. And so the county board rules of orders were amended to require that you go through the executive committee before making your final decision.
On what?
On who to appoint for a replacement. However, you, you did have the, you had Russ Arkand and Johnny Bonaprise.
Right.
And the administrator participate.
Correct.
And so you certainly could suspend that rule because I understand you've had three interviews, and you've made a decision.
Right.
And you would like them to start and not have to wait another month. So in order for you to make that appointment today, the board would need to suspend the rules by two-thirds majority vote, and then you could do that. But this, this, I apologize, and I'm gracious to the clerk for having noted that, keeping us out of hot water.
Okay, before the, before we do that, I'm going to call the administrator for his, his comments and report prior to my.
So you're just moving the agenda around.
Moving the agenda around 10 to 11. So I'm calling on Vince to take my position as far as his report, and then I'll report with the two-thirds approval for the rules.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. I got a couple of things here. First, I mentioned broadband earlier. I'm happy to announce, and Claire Johnson in the back has done a tremendous job of, along with Scott Good and the IT department, of getting our website updated. So if you go to our website, you will see a little box appear on the front that you click on, and it takes you. It's like a broadband cornucopia of information. It's a lot of information about what is broadband, how it can help an individual or a business or a school. Talks about how you can get signed up, who the providers are, and it can even take you to a map provided by the FCC. There's a link to it that you click on that, or, and you put your address in, and it will tell you all the internet services that are available to you and some of the differences of them. Because many people will say, I see them drive right by my house, and they bury in line, but I don't know who it is, and I don't know. Here you can go, and you can see who to call. And, and so it's a good resource. I also declare as putting together a one, a tear-off sheet that we can provide to folks who don't get on the internet and help them. So we're making progress there. There's information about affordability, how some people can get $30 discounted off their bill, and how some people can get $75 discounted off their bill. So good information there. I encourage all of you to look at it. Shared revenue update, I'll be very brief. We all know the amount, $566,000 targeted for law enforcement, public works, courts, and transportation. And as far as beyond that, I don't know a whole lot. We're still waiting for all the specifics and definitions of who can get it, under what circumstances, and how it can be used. There is a conference call tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll get more information, and we'll stay on top of that. What I will note is $566,000 is nice. It's targeted where it has to go. It can't be to replace our spending. It has to be for additional items there. But this year is going to be, and I've mentioned this, and, and I think if not all the committees, most of them, this is going to be an interesting year in terms of budget. We have our challenges. We want a balanced budget, and I'm holding the staff to that. And when you think about, in fact, uncovering now that last year, I think our health fund overspent about one and a half million dollars. This year, we're trending more towards $2 million. Those numbers add up, and when that comes out of our budget, we have to take some actions to do that. So I just caution you now, we're going to take that money and use it wisely. But we also are going to have to be wise in how we, how we spend our money and divvy it up. Reason for it, besides health cars, costs, inflation, and of course, our wage study, which is long overdue, it's probably going to drive up some of our, our wages there. Bottom line, no, I'm still confident that we're going to come in with a balanced budget, and we're going to be very functional. So looking forward to fighting through that. Third thing I want to mention, Ryan, thank you for mentioning Cody. What a great kid he was. So, and don't know much more other than it's always unfortunate. We also had another death in the community that affects us here in Polk County Government. An employee, Kayla Nelson, her husband was killed in a car accident last week, the end of last week. And so Kayla is in mourning now. Our hearts and prayers go out to her, her two young children. In fact, she was on maternity leave with the second child when this happened. So we'll be doing all we can to support her. Finally, after considerable thought and mixed feelings, June 30, I submitted a letter of resignation to Chairman Luke, who then presented it to the executive committee last week. And, and this is, I just want to say, that part of my contract is I needed to give a six-month advance notice. So it's not like you're getting rid of me that quickly yet. But this has been undoubtedly the most fun I've had, I think, in a career for three and a half years so far, soon to be four. I've had so much fun with each of you individually and as a group, the work you do, and what has happened for this community has been so rewarding for me that I'll never forget it. And I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. As for me, this is purely, I don't know, selfish. I want to go spend some time with my wife, dog, and new grandbaby, and have some fun. And so that's what I'm going to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll be thinking that one over and figure out how we can, and work from here without, without you. You've been a great leader as far as I'm concerned, and has been very helpful to this county and the organization. Now, the other thing that we have is my appointment to a, to replace Cher. As you all are aware of, that she's moved out of the territory. And what I decided to do was interview with, along with the first and second vice chair and Vince, we, we reached out, and we had three excellent individuals apply. It was, it was. It was, it was rewarding to see the people that are taking interest in, in. In our efforts in in government duties. In fact, it was a little bit surprising that people are even paying attention to what's going on up here, but they do. And other than the phone calls we get, but you get to recognize those names after a while, they're pretty much the same people that call you on rare. That are experts on everything else happening in the county. So what I'm gonna need, we have made a selection. And what I'm gonna need is a, a change of the rules of order to. Accept my appointment and hopefully. Agree with what we decided to do. So I'll need a motion on that, I think, by. Amy wants to make the motion, oh, what are you raising your hand for?
Oh, I was scratching. Open to editing, but.
Be careful how you stretch around here. Believe me, I own a tractor.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of order requiring. The executive committee to make the appointment.
Not to make the appointment.
Not to make, make the appointment, just.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have to do a roll call, I'm sorry.
Okay, Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Denise Lally-Aprae.
Yes.
Russ Arkand.
Yes.
CJ Simmons.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wardall.
Yes.
Brian Wood.
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
Yes.
And Chair Luke, if you wanna join.
Yes, that's right. Okay. After some diligent considerations and interviews, we, we decided. To appoint. Jeremy Hall. Jeremy is a young man from St. Croix Falls, twenty-seven years old, graduated from St. Paul, or St. Croix High School. He's a full-time firefighter and paramedic graduate from the University of Wisconsin on those. Efforts and he also owns a small business of his own at, in property managers. Month, very ambitious young man, comes highly recommended by even some of these competitors for the job. Recommended that he's a, he's really a good, good man. So we've decided to take, and he has control over his, his calendar and which is. Little, little exciting for us. No, it's, he plans on attending meetings in person. A few days a week or a month is all, but he works twenty-four hours a day, so he can adjust his, his calendar accordingly. So he come very highly, highly recommended and certainly was impressive to us, I think you'll all enjoy working with him. So that's be my appointment, but I do need approval. By the county board, so I need a motion.
A motion to confirm.
Hold second.
Motion made in second to do, who my appointment of Jeremy Hall, favor?
Aye.
I pose same sign. Okay, any supervisors reports?
Can I just ask a question on Jeremy? Will you just come into the, the committee assignments and just be.
Oh, you mean what are they gonna?
Yeah, they're just gonna take. Okay, so will he just take over Sharon's committee?
Well, that's, that's right.
Okay.
He has experience in some of those things and and very active, he's on the city council. And so, yeah, he he's, hopefully he'll be able to fill all of them. There's, there's some that she took over that. That she just took a great interest in, you know, museum and things like that. One of the other, one of the other issues that she was, was very active in is tourism. And in the interview, we noticed that he brought up tourism as a, as a real. Asset to our community and communities of county and has a real interest in that. So I mean, this, this kid is ambitious, you're, you're gonna enjoy working with him, I'm sure. Okay, now. Any supervisors reports?
I do, I do have one.
Go ahead.
I attended a workshop on the water out of Taylor's Falls. And there was a lot of information as a speaker from the University of Minnesota. And then particularly for those of you who are on lakes associations, there's a couple of presentations on shoreline stuff. And then there was a report from some folks who. Took an impaired lake in Lindstrom and moved it to Lakes, North and South Central Lake. Anyway, I think there's another one next week out of Stillwater. And you, it's like a dinner cruise, it's thirty bucks and you have some dinner and it's for public officials and. And I found out about it, I went last year and I found out about it from a mutual friend. Somehow I went last year to get invited again this year, but anyway, I think it's next Tuesday or something, but if it's. Anyway, I can pass along the information if anybody's interested, just.
Interest contact bar.
Yeah, I can, I don't have the info on my head.
Anybody else have anything?
We had a group that went to the zolian planting last Thursday, I think it was what, five of us? Brad, Doug, I went, Vince and Molly was there, so.
I was there. I avoided you, but I was there.
You did avoid me, good. No, I seen you there.
Okay, yeah, that was a very, very impressive.
Yeah, that was a good meeting.
Bunch of info, nice attendance, you know, but input from various locations, all similar problems. As I know this, so.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, that was good. I do want to mention. That. To replace Vince, we're gonna, we'll reach out, you know, to, to different organizations ourselves. And I, I know we have some qualified people within our in-house, so to speak. And I do hope or that they, they take an interest in helping us fill those shoes. They understand probably better than anybody, well, how, what they've got to do to. You know, to keep the transition as smooth as possible. We've had a excellent relationship with, with the administration. All told, in, in this county, in the la, that, that I have been working directly with. And I'm pretty impressed with them and I, I do hope they have a, have an intense interest to. Help us continue on that effort. But we will be following up and I'm, I feel comfortable with, with the time element involved. We'll have a, a relatively good transition. I just definitely wanted to thank him for the efforts that he's come up with and the, the ideas and then it'd be hard to replace, but we've, we've got. We've got some capable people. All right, now, do you want to go into closed session?
You're going to closed session?
Motion made, go into closed session.
Nineteen eighty-five one G, if you would.
Can we close you on closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen five one G?
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Your second roll call.
Amy Middleton. Denise Lally-Aprae. Russ Arkand.
Yes.
CJ Simmons.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wardall.
Yes.
Brian Wood.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara Maff.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
We've gone through everything that I can see on this, unless somebody wants to. All in favor?
Aye.
All in same sign, standing.